Board to order on this twentieth day of October 2022. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Supervisor Schneiderman?
Here.
Councilwoman McNamara?
Here.
Councilman Martel?
Here.
Councilman Bouvier?
Here.
Councilman Skiberg?
Present.
Okay, so we are getting started with a update on the Fire Island to Montauk project. And we are joined by Len Marchese, who's an independent financial advisor to the town at this point, former comptroller, Kellyanne Doyle, who's assistant town attorney, Arum Chichunian, who's a coastal advisor, and Gil Anderson, who is working for L.K. McLean Associates and formerly County Commissioner of Public Works. Who is kicking off here?
I'll start. So this is, like you said, the Fire Island inlet to Montauk Point project. This project is designed to reduce flood risk along the coastline in Suffolk County. You have a handout there from the Army Corps that you can read through. Most of this information is in there, but I'll just briefly go over everything. Before we actually schedule a formal public hearing, we just wanted to do an update today. But we would like to schedule a formal public hearing or meeting, possibly a special meeting, to have the Army Corps and the DEC come and give a presentation. We did, at the request of the village mayor and Quog, we had an informational meeting where the Army Corps came and DEC, and they gave a presentation. There was a question and answer session, and residents were able to ask questions. So we would like to do that here. We could do it at Town Hall or somewhere larger, maybe. I don't know how many people we might be expecting. But just to give you a brief update, we have all of our consultants here to help move this project along. It's a federal project. The entire project spans the south shore of Suffolk County. It includes portions of five towns, 12 incorporated villages, the Fire Island National Seashore, and two Indian reservations. The initial project construction cost is estimated to be 1.5 billion. The initial construction phase is eligible to be constructed at 100% federal expense through the Disaster Relief Appropriations Act of 2013. And we do have a project partnership agreement between the town, the state, and the Army Corps. And the project involves different contracts. Contract one is to the west. That includes dredging Fire Island inlet and placement of sand on adjacent beaches. And then contract two, contract one has already been started. Contract two will include dredging riches and Shinnecock inlets and shoals with sand placement for restoration of natural coastal process features. And Arum and Gil could probably tell you more about those coastal process features. But contract three, this is what we're talking about today. This is what we are working on now. Contract three includes offshore dredging and sand placement in order to re-nourish the beach and build up the dune system, or reconstruct the dune if there is no dune there right now. So pursuant to the project partnership agreement, the town is responsible for providing all the necessary real estate in order to construct this project and maintain it. And the Army Corps has given us a list, I'll save approximately 100 properties, for which we have to obtain real estate. What does that mean? Real estate is an easement. We have to obtain easements over these 100 parcels.
An easement to do work and place sand?
Yes. So it's called a perpetual beach storm damage reduction easement. It's a permanent work easement, essentially, which allows the Army Corps, the DEC, and the town to access that area in order to build up the dune, to maintain the dune, to place sand, to nourish the beach. So this is what we have to get started with. Just to give you a brief overview of the process, it's a little bit more detailed than this, but I'll just briefly go over it. So we have to retain surveyors first. They have to survey the property, and they have to place the easement area on the survey so we know what we're talking about.
So does that mean that the Army Corps has given you a map showing the work area?
Yes. So what we have up here on the wall, we have maps. It's kind of hard to see because it's a large area, but there's a line that shows you the crest of dune, I believe.
That's a color map. Yeah, the aerial is probably best.
Yeah, it's hard to...
It's in your package, too.
Yeah, it's in the package, too.
The aerial, I think, is...
So once we survey the property, then we go to the owner, I would assume? I'll wait till they...
Yes.
Okay.
Is this done? What's the scale? Actual size?
It's just ahead of page seven, before page seven.
So it's hard to see, but the easement area is these two orange, I guess brown lines here. So that's the entire easement area. It goes right along here. And it's actually very similar, I guess Arum and Gil could probably tell you more about this, but the trustees' public access easement right now, it pretty much follows that. So there's already an easement in favor of the public to pass and repass. So that's...
So it's from, what, high watermark to...
To the crest of the dune.
To the crest of the dune.
In some cases, not even to the crest of the dune.
Okay. And that is the trustee easement?
Well, the town easement is from the southerly crest of the dune to the high waterline. So this is almost the identical area.
And this is a linear depiction. Once you've gotten surveys, it's going to be like this. It's not going to look like this.
Not exactly should be happening.
The Corps has issued 90% plans, and you'll see, if you look at a lot of the work in certain areas, the elevation's high enough so they don't have to really build the dune. They can meet existing elevation. However, things change, storms come in. You know, the idea is that you have an easement that can recreate the dune from the northerly limits to the southerly limits of the berm. So there is a template, you know, based on that, and how it's constructed. If I have rough plan showing closer version of the planning that's shown here...
I think that's good for them to see.
Yeah. If you want to just take...
So does that include the, you're talking about now elevation two from water level up to a certain point? That's one maintenance you have to have. The second are the topographical part at the close part of the dune, right? Does this include leveling that out in order to meet those, or are you trying to keep that as natural?
No, it's all additional sand. So the design template is that the beach itself is going to be 90 feet wide from the landward, from the seaward toe of the dune to what they call the berm crest. And that's going to be elevation nine. Right now, your beach elevation is around seven or eight. So it's going to raise up that beach about a foot or more, and it's going to make it from the dune to, you know, remember when you go to the beach, you rub from the dune down to the water, you get to the crest, and then it slopes to the water? So that, from that peak of that berm crest back to the seaward toe of dune, it'll be 90 feet wide and 90 feet high. And then the dune itself is only going to be 13 feet high. So it's the only additional 14 feet.
And that's just deposited sand?
It's all deposited. It's all new sand.
And it's compatible?
Oh, yeah.
A detailed question. Does this include, like, snow fencing or beach grass?
The construction will include beach...
When it's done.
When it's done. Actually, that, at least as of right now, when they did FEMA, the western end, they put in grass after it was shaped. It was all six...
It worked?
Yeah. There's all duplicates here.
Yes, this is all, this is actually, what you see there is each of the plans that are shown to here, so it's one set.
Okay.
Do you want to pass them back?
So...
Sorry.
Yeah. So that's the design, and that's the physical area.
The sand being deposited seaward of that, but they have the right already to do that?
Well, it's New York State land.
That's New York State land.
Everything below high water.
So they're building up the sand, they're building up the beach well into the ocean, but they have permission to do that part, yeah?
Well, because the state is a cooperating agency.
Yeah, but if you change that elevation, also change that reach, too, right? Over time, I mean, that's what we're trying to prevent here, right? The state-owned land's going to either move back or move forward.
Right. Yeah.
But in this particular case, the easement also comes with, you know, part of the contract will be that if there is a storm that comes in and does reduce the berm and the dune to a certain elevation, they will then be able to come in and then re-nourish the beach and the dune accordingly.
And if it's a major storm, that's fully funded by the federal government?
Yes. So one of the advantages between the Fint project and regular FEMA is that on an Army Corps of Engineer project, FEMA is not involved at all. You know, FEMA is a cost share. On an Army Corps project, it's Public Law 8499. It's 100% federal cost to restore it to the project condition.
Okay. But it has to be an emergency. It has to be a major storm?
No.
No?
No. In the information you have there, there should be a drawing which will show different contracts and different...
Like damaging storms?
Yeah. So I believe this area is proactive that with a certain, you know, over time, things happen, it starts to erode, it gets to a certain elevation, they will then come in and then restore the beach.
And there's a cost share there?
Doesn't have to be a big storm.
Well, there's two events here. One is project construction, which is what's 100% fairly funded and currently agreed to. Second piece of that is project maintenance, which is cost shared, but there's no project participation agreement yet. That's not in place as of today. But once the initial project is constructed, if after that construction there is any type of storm which compromises the design of the project, then the Army Corps is authorized and obligated under Federal law 8499 to restore that project to its project condition at 100% federal cost.
So what happens where we have access points from our beaches and for four-wheel drive and those types of things? That's obviously, we still have control over that, but if your, if the project is filling in certain accessways because of the layout of the topography, what happens there? How do we maintain the ability to provide our constituents with beach access and all that type of stuff?
There still is, there will still be an access. Under FEMA, it was built to the same shape, a little, pretty much the same shape as the dune. You know, it was more accessible, if I remember right, there was a stone-based road that was built over it. You know, it wouldn't last under conditions of a storm, but it did allow trucks and other vehicles to gain access over the dune and get onto the...
Yeah, the access, so the maintenance of the access becomes a local responsibility. But the Corps will construct the access.
Okay. So they have to work with each of those organs? I mean, we have private beach clubs, some town, some...
No, no, private is private.
Okay.
And, you know, you have the lettered roads, and then there's some, there's two public access points in Quog, and, you know, those would be incorporated.
Is your concern like at the lettered roads where trucks drive onto the beach that there'll all be a dune there?
Yeah. But the Corps will construct an accessway over that dune that meets the dune design, and that is accessible by the vehicles.
Yep.
But it'll then become the town responsibility to maintain that, that dune crossover.
I know in Montauk where they did that, yeah, they put some kind of plastic matting that trucks can then drive over the dune.
Yeah, there's a couple of different ways to do it.
But that's part of it?
The initial construction is going to be 100% federal. The maintenance of that is going to be a local responsibility.
Yeah, because, I mean, during storms, we've had some washouts from the ocean side going on to our properties and actually to the bayside, you know, we've had that kind of situation. So I'm just checking what this program's for. Trying to wonder what's going to happen.
Arum, getting back to the question.
If this stops, it, we're lucky, right?
Just one at a time.
A quick question. As far as the federal funding, does that, is the federal government funding contracts six through 10, including contract eight, which of course is our area? That's the upland FEMA house-raising project? That's all fully, okay. That's all fully federally funded?
Yes.
It's not cost sharing and...
No, no, that's all 100% federal. It's 1.5 to 1.7, the numbers change a little bit. A billion dollars of that is elevating the 4,500 homes on the mainland.
Right.
Only about 500 or 600 million is actual sand.
Does that include homes on the Shinnecock Nation?
I don't know the answer to that. I'd have to look. There is, we have a real estate map.
I mean, Poussetouque, too, and Mastick, but that's...
I would think it does.
Okay.
Of the 4,500 homes that are getting elevated, I think only about 10% are in South Hampton.
That's all right.
Okay. More homes to the west.
So this includes nourishment to all of, like, the entire shoreline, not just the barrier beaches? It's the entire?
No. No. So for contract three, which is what we're talking about today, extends from the Quog Beach Club, which is right here, to roughly to Shinnecock Inlet.
So it would include, like, Flying Point?
No. In fact, that, anything east of Shinnecock Inlet, except for downtown Montauk, is specifically excluded.
It's actually fair to say that the program really is to protect the mainland, the shorelines on the mainland, where the houses are going to be raised. That's really the focus of this project, even though it's, by hitting the sand, it's going to be protecting the houses on the barrier beach, but it's really, the focus of this is to protect the mainland.
You address that when you came to us with the coastal erosion district in Bridgehampton and Sagaponic. It's interesting, it's a ratio between the number of homes in distance to the beach. You would explain it better than I would.
No, you did pretty well.
Okay.
You're talking about the cost benefit analysis?
Yeah, the benefit cost, exactly. Yeah. There just aren't enough homes on the barrier to justify this expenditure, but if you look at the density of homes on the mainland, it's pretty clear.
But our coastal erosion districts work, that capital project, is somewhat in conjunction with what's happening here?
Well, it's...
Putting sand on the beach.
It's putting sand on the beach. And the benefit cost works for them in that situation.
Yeah, I mean, the Bridgehampton, Sagaponic ECD has been doing a similar project 100% funded by them.
Yeah.
A little bit from the town.
A little bit from the town.
A little bit.
Very little.
A little bit the first time. I'm not sure about the second time.
But those projects should work pretty, if they go at the same time, they should be about, the dredging should happen about the same time if we can get this project off the ground.
Oh, it could be a benefit by, since you have a mobilized dredge, doing this, yeah.
And I think as far as access to the beach, John, as you mentioned about the lettered roads, there may be a time, and there probably will be a time, I think, in my experiences with DOT, when they did, you know, work along road improvements, they try to maintain access to places where people want to get to, whether it's stores or whatnot. But, I mean, there may be times where some of the lettered roads are going to be blocked, you know, during the work. It's inevitable, I'm sure.
Well, I was also thinking about, you know, where there is some dispute between jurisdictions, particularly with the Incorporated Villages, you know, that could potentially be an issue that could hold this up.
Well, I think we're okay here because within the project area, there's only one village accessway.
Within this contract, three. Yeah, I'm talking about the whole thing.
The other side.
Yeah. We're working very close, obviously, with the village of Quog. We are actually representing the village of Quog in this whole...
What about the trustees? Okay?
I think generally speaking, they're okay. I think they need to get briefed as well, but...
Okay, because they, yeah, they have all those road endings, and they probably own some.
I mean, in general, they've been supportive of this and other projects like it.
And the easement, I would imagine that we would have to get permission from the trustees to use their easement, the easement.
We might need an easement over their property.
Absolutely going to be an easement over their property, yeah. That's what this is all about.
So we have a separate easement, that whoever, whether it's with the board or the trustees, allows the Corps to do what they need to do to restore the beach and the dune. So I don't know that, it'll be an interesting discussion to have with the Corps as to how they want to proceed with the easement.
Well, I know that there's a disclaimer that this does not necessarily represent the views of the Army Corps in here, so, yeah, it's been there.
It would be very odd, like, if, you know, since the trustees own those roads, if they were to not sign off, then we had to condemn the easement, and we'd be condemning sort of against ourselves, just...
Well, part of the benefit, part of the benefit of the...
That's a hypothetical.
Part of the benefit of the...
I mean, that's, the trustees are this sort of strange entity.
Well, part of the benefit of them having an easement already is the cost of the new easement shouldn't be that much because they've already given the trustees an easement, right? Right? So what's the extra delta value of that?
Well, there's also a general public right of way that's been established there, too.
That's what I was thinking.
You know, trustee easement is for collecting seaweed and fishing and things like that, but the public also has a right of way in that area, that decision, the Dolphin Lane, whatever it was.
Dolphin Lane, yeah, Judge Geiler's decision. We'll have to, that's the argument, right?
There is the full right of the public to pass and repass, which should, you know, I know it's...
Not just up, but across.
Technically, it's private property there, but it's private property that contains a public easement already.
And that came with the deed from the king. So it predates...
No, so we have to argue that part.
Well, yeah, well, that's the appraisers. We're going to have to determine what the value of that easement is, and people may think that it's worth more. But does, when you wear a work easement over an area that, you know, they can't do anything with, they can't block public access to, it's got to be less valuable than one, like, in P. G. W. The Montauk, where you don't have that language, and the courts have established that's private property.
It's a valuation issue, and that's what the appraisers are going to have to determine, how the existing trustee's easement impacts the, how the placement of the work easement that we are going to establish, how the trustees and the line easement impacts the valuation of that.
So it...
So this is supposed to start January 24th, contract three?
Contract three is supposed to be executed in October, November of '23, and then initial construction in January '24. But we've got some serious challenges to meet that deadline, and here's what the main challenge is. Everything that we do has to be approved by the state and by the Army Corps. And in order for us to do, for example, let's just take surveys, because Kelly will walk you through, we've got to do this, 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 there's like five steps. Let's just take one of them. Gil prepared a document over a month ago that said, "We want to let this RFP for survey services." We sent that up to the DEC and to the Army Corps, crickets. Email them once a week, crickets. We're now, a month later, we don't have approval of them, of the Army Corps and the DEC, in order for the town to let the RFP to engage the surveyor. Now, this is going to happen at each of these steps along the way. So my plea, if you will, to the board is, the town is, needs to, has and needs to continue to take a leadership position in moving this project forward because we have the most at stake. But we need the cooperation of Albany and Washington in getting their respective agencies to respond to us in a timely manner so that we can execute on behalf of the town. And we're stuck there right now, quite frankly. And we're going to get stuck again at each one of these steps. So we have names and numbers.
Can I, can I ask these?
Okay. So we should call, right? We're seeing...
These drawings, A1, are these sufficient for now a surveyor to go take this and plot it on?
What they'll have, yeah, right now, we have what they call the shape file, which is the reference line that was provided by the Corps, which establishes the dune. So, excuse me, we can now give that to surveyors, who can then plot it on a survey. They have to come out, they have to do a boundary survey, they have to do a topo survey. That document, which eventually gets prepared, is given to the appraisers, they can start their appraisal. Under FEMA, we gave them partial surveys so they could at least begin to contact the homeowners, start their assessment, and begin the appraisal process. But yes, we have enough information right now that we can give them to the surveyors. Surveyors then have to tie in existing on-ground data and bring...
Yeah, because you need to get your volumes. There's a lot here.
The other question related to this, I mean, there are quite a number of structures, so primarily decks and walkways that fall into this work easement, but there are, on a couple occasions, actual buildings.
No buildings.
Well, they're, right now, it depends, a lot of it depends on what the...
What is the upper dotted line? That's the one that...
The, yeah, it's probably, I can't see it, but it's probably the northward toe of the dune. So under FEMA, what happened was structures that were within that footprint were allowed to remain if their elevation was such that they could put sand in there and you could justify that grass could grow. So we haven't gotten to that point yet, but there may be, you know, again, a lot of it depends on when we get the physical surveys established. There may be some raising of structures. What there may be, and what we saw to the west, was if a building is here and it's within the toe of the dune, as long as it doesn't impact the construction of the dune, it can stay. But future storms come in and they knock the house down for whatever, God forbid. Now, they're allowed to, either they'll be allowed to rebuild, or, and I believe if they're over the crest of the dune, they're history. They're not allowed to rebuild.
Or move back.
Oh, yeah, you're absolutely, you know, and again, you'll be able to see, they'll be able to move the houses to the north and outside of the footprint.
Saying that house is on the dune.
Yeah, that house actually, that property's in the process of, that whole, there's like three lots there in the process of being redeveloped right now. That house is going to get moved.
It's going to be moved. And there's a couple that just gets right up to the...
Gets right up, but again, you know, these are shape files, it's not the survey file. And if we're talking about a few feet, they can do a project realignment where it moves a couple of feet.
No, actually, I'm not arguing with you, they won't. We tried that on to the west, the dune, that line is that line. So they'll allow you, they'll allow you to lift it up. If there's a deck that's over it, they'll allow you to lift it up. Again, you know, it becomes something, under, the one major difference between, that I've noticed so far, is that under this project, the Corps is not going to reconstruct the crossovers. What they'll do is they'll, the appraised value of that reconstruction and redesign and repermitting will be included in the appraised value.
Right.
So it'll be up to the homeowner to do it.
But they'll be compensated for it.
Right.
What if they're required to move back or raise?
Well, we're dealing, you know, here, with the one exception that the supervisor pointed out, these are all walkways. And they're all permitted, and they don't have to...
Well, if it all roads back as a storm result, what is considered the norm at that point?
Well, the town has its own regulations, coastal erosion, crest...
Well, that's where we have this jurisdictional issue.
But what Gil is saying, once the easement is granted, then the footprint of the easement becomes a no-build zone regardless of anything else. But on top of that, the town still maintains its own crest of dune and coastal erosion line, which in 99% of the cases, I got to believe, is going to cause them to move back in the event of a loss due to a storm.
That's kind of what, yeah, all right, good.
What happens to, like, GO tubes or sandbag walls and things like that that are in that work area?
Well, Gil has experience with that in FEMA.
Yeah, what they did, for the most part, and even in Montauk, was that they were allowed to remain as long as they didn't extend above the footprint of the dune. If a storm comes through and knocks it back, which it did in Montauk, those GO tubes or whatever they were, were removed. But they don't have to be removed in their current location, as long as they're...
Private, you're not talking about the ones that the Army Corps puts in there?
Right, correct. The Army Corps didn't want any GO tubes, any type of hard structure, if you will, because under extreme storm conditions, they feel they don't stand up, and they can actually do more damage, so.
Well, that's a big change for the Army Corps, from the old thinking.
Right.
Well, that's why I'll point out, there is a disclaimer.
More information.
Right, yeah. So, all right, so Kelly, I guess back to you, we were sort of at the, you were sort of saying we need to hire... Well, that's where we have this jurisdictional issue between...
But, but that, what, what Gil is saying, once the easement is granted, then the footprint of the easement becomes a no-build zone regardless of anything else. But on top of that, the town still maintains its own crest of dune and coastal erosion line, which in ninety-nine percent of the cases, I gotta believe, is gonna cause them to move back in the event of a loss due to a storm.
That's kind of what, yeah, all right, good.
What happens to, like, GO tubes or sandbag walls and things like that that are in that work area?
Well, Gil has experience with that in FEMA.
Yeah, what, what they did for the most part, and even in Montauk, was that they were allowed to remain as long as they didn't extend above the footprint of the dome. If a storm comes through and knocks it back, which it did in Montauk, those GO tubes or whatever they were, were removed. But they don't have to be removed in their current location, as long as they're...
Private, you're not talking about the ones that the Army Corps puts in there?
Correct, yeah. The Army Corps didn't want any GO tubes, any type of hard structure, if you will, because under extreme storm conditions, they feel they're, they don't stand up. And they can actually do more damage, so.
Well, that's a, a big change for the Army Corps, from the old thinking.
Right.
Well, that, that's why I'll point out, there is a disclaimer.
More information.
Right, yeah.
So, all right, so Kelly, I guess, back to you, we were sort of at the, you were sort of saying we need to hire surveyors.
Wait, yeah, so we're gonna start with the surveyors, we kinda went through that, and then we need title companies, they have to give us title certifications in order to confirm who actually owns the lot, and when we do record easements, we have to know anyone that would have an interest, like mortgage holders. I mean, we would have to get their consent in order to file the easement. The next thing, talked about the appraisers, we're going to need to hire the appraisers. And then they give us a value, basically, of the easement, and then we take those numbers and then we go out and make offers to the homeowners for the easements, and they can either accept our offer and sign the easement, and that's great, we can go record it, or they can reject the offer, in which case we have to commence condemnation proceedings in the Supreme Court in Suffolk County.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Name of a number of properties that are LLCs and sometimes find some difficulty in tracking down the owners, the actual owners of the property. Do you foresee that as a problem?
I know at least, we spoke with the village mayor in Quogue, and they have a pretty good list of everyone in the village and contact information. So, that's really helpful. For the other properties, we do have our town files with addresses there, and we can look up, you know, applications that have been made and the addresses, email addresses they put down, where their tax bills get sent, right? So, I don't foresee that being a problem, it could just be that some people don't respond. And in that case, we would have to go to condemnation because...
Yeah, but also, the, the area of the town is within the Tiana Beach Ridge Control District, which has an advisory board that, that reports back to this board, and they're a very cohesive group. So, if there was a, if there's a question, we could probably call upon them to assist.
And like Kelly said, we're gonna do a ton of, we're gonna have a ton of reports, search on every one of these, if we have to.
Do we put the money out for this?
Yeah, so that, I wanted to go over that, so, basically, you have a hundred parcels, right? So, each parcel is a, is its own contained reimbursement packet, right? So, each parcel will have an appraiser, it will have a survey, it will have a title company, it will have a purchase price of this easement, whatever that may be. So, we have to group and track all of those courses, and we put that together, and then we submit that to the Corps, probably in bunches, you know, like, we have these that we've agreed to, and so we'll, you know, we can submit that for reimbursement. But you have to figure that you have a hundred parcels, a survey, an appraiser, and title on each parcel could be twenty thousand, twenty-five thousand dollars just for the technical aspect of a hundred parcels, that's two and a half million dollars, right? It will be reimbursable, those direct costs, but that will take some time.
That's, that twenty thousand is the soft costs that don't involve actually purchasing easements?
I'm not, yeah, I don't know, I don't know what that's gonna be worth, that's why we're gonna, if, if you tell me it's worth nothing, then that's a good number. But if you tell me it's worth ten thousand or a hundred thousand, I don't know what the number is.
Just make up that number, ten thousand over...
So, that's a nut, so that'd be, you know, another million dollars, so, you know, you're talking about a good amount of money.
Paying out potentially three million dollars.
Correct, plus there's gonna be some administrative costs with all of this, that has to get added in.
Technicals, and we're gonna get reimbursed the three million, what's our wait period in if we...
Well, you can't submit the claim until you've completed and you've gotten accepted easement on that property. It has to be the complete package, right?
Do they also, I, the owner, not just the owner, right, so the owner, let's say it's ten thousand, owner agrees, do the, does the Army Corps or some federal agency also have to agree that that is the right...
Yeah, they're gonna sign, we're gonna submit this whole package to them, they're gonna review it, this is what Aaron's talking about. That, I can just imagine how long that's gonna take. Yeah, it was, it was a process. So, we have to get it in exact format to sit to them so that it's easy for them to approve, right? So, that we want, that's, that's part of what I'm gonna be doing. Every, every step, we're going back to them, so, for example...
Surveys have to be approved, appraisals have to be approved.
Appraisal RFPs have to be approved.
Everything has to be approved by them.
And then when we get the appraisal, that analysis will have to be reviewed by the...
If the homeowner rejects it and we have to condemn?
Yes.
And that's a whole process.
Oh, yeah, and that's, that's, that's gonna be a very paper-intensive and time-intensive procedure.
What is the reimbursing agent getting the acquiring...
Army Corps of Engineers.
Only.
Acquiring the, acquiring the properties, and, you know, unfortunately, I think we're gonna have to probably do a lot of these through the combination process.
If a judge, if a judge decides that the easement's worth more than we've offered, the Army Corps still reimburses us the higher number.
Absolutely gonna be my position, but I know that we've kind of boxed in a little bit on the PPA, but ob, you know, absolutely, obviously, the fair market value of a piece of property is what the judge decides it to be, that's absolutely gonna be, has, and has to be our position.
And Jim's right, but here's the caveat, the appraisal that the town uses in the litigation has to be approved, that individual appraisal has to be approved by the Army Corps. If they approve that appraisal, and that's the one that's used in the litigation, and the cost comes higher, then they will cover.
Can we bond this?
If that's the case, then it's fine.
Can we put out a bond, here's my question, it, it probably is gonna be a couple of years between the outlay from the town and reimbursement. If we bond it, we can tack on a, a percentage and kind of get that back from the federal government.
I think from the financing standpoint, you're gonna need a short-term financing mechanism, and you're gonna need to provide some local funding, too. So, right now, in the capital budget, there's a million one available that we've put in there, but basically, we've offset that with federal aid. I think you're gonna need some short-term mechanisms, you'll have to talk to your controller on how to fund this project while you're laying out money, because you're gonna be laying out money for a period of time without seeing anything coming in. So, you might have to lend money from the general fund or...
And do you think the federal government would pay the interest on bonds, that's my, they would do that?
Probably not. They have a very strict guidelines on what they reimburse us on, what...
So do we, and, you know, I mean, of course, we wanna do this, but if it takes them three years to pay us back, there's three years of money that we've put out that we're not getting back from the federal government, they should pay that.
Three million dollars from our reserve, that we're earning.
Four percent, three...
Four percent.
Work out the process.
They need to pay us back the interest that we lost on that money.
No, I, I'm not, we have a meeting, we have a conference with them on November third, where we're gonna go over in detail what we...
A simple answer, no.
So, we'll bring that up, our carrying costs while we're laying out the money, if we can get that reimbursed. There's also other costs, Jay, too.
Hundreds of thousands of dollars.
There's administrative costs that, see, they have, particularly, they've indicated that whatever direct cost for this property, that will be reimbursable, whatever that direct cost, the survey, the appraisal. But what you have here is you have some administrative folks that are moving this project along. You know, the town is, the town is got, getting a five-hundred-million-dollar sand punishment here. But we have to administer getting these claims, filing, moving contractors.
And we can't tie all that to specific properties right now.
And we can't tie it to a specific property, so it's very hard, so there's gonna be, you know, like a ten percent or fifteen percent local share of perhaps administrative costs, and so we need to be prepared for that, that's all. And, and we're gonna argue that it should be reimbursable, Jim is gonna argue that, and we're gonna, we're gonna make that case, but in the, in the, in the, if we can't make that case, that...
Has this already been argued on the FEMA side?
Yes.
And how did that end up?
And I'm not, I don't really have that information, I would suggest following up to see, so that whatever was, you know, provided to the county, gets provided to the town.
We've tried to go to school on, on the county's experience, it's one of the reasons why we have Mr. Anderson here.
I'm sure a lot of these, but we're not, we're not, I'm sure we're not raising a lot of new questions.
Kelly and I and Gil have met with the county on a number of occasions already, we, you know, we're going to school on their experiences, and I've learned a lot, we've all learned a lot. Obviously, Gil was, was there, you know, so he, and we're very, you know, fortunate to have him here now with us. So, yeah, we, we try not to, you know, have to relearn things. We've met with the appraisers of the county, we've met with the real estate, the county attorney's office, they've just, and engineer at DPW, trying to see what their experience have been, what have you experienced, not only with the, the public, but also your experiences dealing with the state, your experiences dealing with the Corps. I think as Aaron had mentioned earlier, it seems to experience the, the relationship with the Corps is the, is the more sensitive one, you'd say, you know.
So, we want the sand, we definitely want the sand, but we also want carrying costs and administrative costs, too. In addition to the other thing you mentioned.
Of those two costs, your, your carrying costs are gonna be a bust because they've got a policy against it. So, I, I wouldn't spend a lot of capital there, but your administrative costs are quite reasonable, they're integral to getting this thing that is required that they're gonna pay you for, but I think you need help in Albany and Washington to convince people.
And then timing, you know, timing, if we have to acquire properties through the combination process, which unfortunately, we probably will, a good many of them. And the, there's one judge in Suffolk County who handles combination claims, Judge Leo, and he also has a metro rental part, a very busy metro rental part, and a tax securary part, so he can be sometimes difficult to track that, I've worked in front of him, I know him pretty well and have a good relationship with him.
I mean, it's just important, it's important, particularly, you know, coming from the chief fiscal officer, you know, I, I need to know all these financial impacts that are not reimbursable, all the ongoing costs, you know, for, for instance, if we have to take three million out of our reserves and I'm losing four percent interest on that for three years waiting for reimbursement, that is an impact to the budget.
In, in that regard, I think this, I think, based upon what I've been told and, and Gil's experience, that what's gonna happen is there's gonna be an initial wait time when we get the first group that's gonna go in, that gets approved, and the Army Corps likes it, and everything's good, and everything's filed, it's gonna be some period of time, whatever that is, six, eight, twelve months. And that first package, whether it's five or ten, are gonna go in for, for review and reimbursement. That process, once that goes in, is probably gonna take about six months. Then it's gonna be rolling, so you're, we're gonna put together five or ten, submit them as packages, and then it's gonna be another six months. I don't think it's start, wait three years.
So, who pays for, like, you're talking here about some of the non-structural efforts and analysis of these, that's, who's paying for it?
What, what do you mean by the non-structural analysis?
Well, I'm looking at work here, on your data collection, the strength of the foundations of some of these properties, and I'm not sure quite what this means.
Oh, but that's not this contract.
It's not in three...
Yeah, no, that's contract. Contract three is strictly sand, sand placement.
Okay, so even the structures like the supervisor pointed out are closer to the water, there's no, gonna be no, no analysis on their part?
As of right now, we don't believe there's gonna be.
Okay, as of right now.
And historically, there has not been.
It's a little confusing, but they use the term structural, so...
Well, they're, actually, they're saying non-structural.
Well, non-structural is elevating buildings, which is kind of structural. And structural is placing sand, which is kind of non-structural.
Structural, the structural is the, you know, probably the...
It's the federal government.
Yeah, well, see, and that's why I always sort of step back, because it can be a real issue. I mean, what you're experiencing right now, just even in communication with the Army Corps, you know, we've experienced that on a local level for other things, so it doesn't go...
Dealing with the federal government is a very painstaking and tedious and arduous job.
Can I ask again on the financial...
One I personally have experienced, so I have a reaction.
Whether it's the IRS or anything else, it's just...
So, assuming we're able to get past this, we get everything, we're doing the surveys, we're doing the appraisals, we're, we're purchasing the easements, one day getting reimbursed for them, mostly reimbursed, the project gets built, lots of sand, beautiful beaches.
Rolling shovels.
Over, over time, they come back every few years and they bring that dredge back and they pump the sand. The next time they come back, though it's not fully federally funded, it's, there's a cost share, and the town is, well, like fifteen percent of the, of the total. And so, and so the next time, it's not gonna be as much as the first time in terms of cost, the, the big project is building up that beach, but maintaining that beach over time, how is that local share being paid? And we have mostly ECDs, right?
Well, you have, and, and within the town portion of this project, it is completely within the ECD.
That's the Tiana ECD.
The Tiana, the Tiana ECD, so there's no sand going on the other side of Quogue?
No, not in contract three, no.
Okay, 'cause I know there's an unincorporated area between West Hampton Beach and West Hampton Dunes.
Right.
But they're not getting anything.
Okay, they're, in contract three, they're not getting anything, in the overall project, they are authorized to receive sand.
So, over the thirty-year life of this, they may actually get sand.
You might have to extend your, you might have to extend your ECD to include that.
Or establish a new ECD.
Correct, correct.
So, all right, so that's not something we have to worry about immediately?
But you will need to address that. Here's, here's something you, you wanna keep in mind, because this has financial implications to the town.
I wanna get a sense, too, on the local cost share within the ECDs, we've experienced this with West Hampton and the side of Ponnick, the town owns some properties, and the town is tax exempt, we don't pay property taxes, so when we assess this against the tax base, I guess there's a choice whether the town is going to pay a proportional share or not, which then would be...
You should check the authorizing legislation on Tiana, I think it already obligates the town.
On Tiana?
On Tiana, it does.
That the town for its properties...
Says that they'll be proportional.
Does that extend to the...
Hold on, so that then would get assessed against the full town? Not, not, not just the...
Well, because covering your beaches and stuff, sure.
Yeah, it's public beaches, right, so, so I get, do we have a sense of what that number is gonna be? No.
Most of that property is the town property?
No, not within the project area, it's probably ten, fifteen percent.
Okay. Even parks and preserves?
Yeah.
A quick question for you, Len, I'm, I'm looking at Phase Two of our presentation, so for Southampton, we're seeing twelve, three-hundred-and-sixteen parcels from the town of Southampton for four-hundred-and-forty-five acres at fifty-two thousand, fifty-two million dollars projected cost. Just wanna reiterate that, we've already had this discussion, but it's a, it's a, it's a mind-boggling number.
More than half of that number is the Corps' internal cost of reviewing the documents we sent them.
So, we reimburse them for the study?
We're working on...
No, that's the overall budget that they're...
I'm not sure where they came up with that parcel count either, there might be some bayside parcels in that. But we're, we're working on a hundred, give or take, parcels that we need easements on, that we're gonna be laying out money for. And let's go through that number, 'cause Len's brought up a good point, as did you, Council of Uvea. There, there, that's, that is pretty close to the total number of parcels from Shinnecock Inlet to Murchison Inlet. But let's, let's understand this, a hundred and forty-four of those are in the Village of West Hampton Dunes. That's all state property, take them off the table, okay? That's one parcel all owned by the state of New York, don't need an easement. Number two, the, there's a whole bunch of parcels that are municipally owned, whether it's county or town or village within that, I'll say the count is probably close to fifty, take them off, they're easy, okay? The area in West Hampton Beach where the Groynes are, there's a triple-dune system and the beach is five hundred feet wide. They're never getting sand, they'll never meet the criteria. If they ever need sand in that place, that means that Barrier Island is missing, okay? So, that's probably a hundred to a hundred-and-fifty properties.
West Hampton Dunes area?
No, West Hampton Beach.
Okay, 'cause I know we had a breakthrough there, even though the Groynes were there one time.
Right, on the west side of the Groynes.
Yeah, so this would be, you know, east of, of West Hampton Dunes, and so, take them off the table. So, now, we take the hundred that we're gonna do for this project, there's probably another fifty or a hundred left where we need to get the easements, and here's what's important, the Army Corps will pay one-hundred percent of the easement cost prior to construction of contract three. Okay, so, if, whatever easements that we get out of the total bucket of easements prior to the construction of contract three, we get reimbursed for. Any easement necessary, we have a big storm, and now we've got to re-nurture the area in the unincorporated portion of West Hampton, and we need an easement, that easement becomes a hundred percent the local town responsibility.
So, we should get it early on?
We should get as many as we can.
We should try to get it now.
I would imagine the home...
The discussion we've had with the Corps, they've been in agreement with that, correct me if I'm wrong, my understanding is, 'cause we've raised this, is this initial seventy, a hundred easements that we're gonna be obtaining are the first phase, so that they can begin the construction. The next group is to complete the entire line that's needed in front of the town. Yeah, listen, but isn't it right that we can get those while the project's underway, and it still would count? That we have to get, again, everything has to be written clarification, but... See, because we wanna get this thing done, because you have to keep waiting, and then this, you'll never get to get a shovel of sand on the ground. I mean, because if we can start the construction and then obtain some additional, these additional easements after, but before the project's complete, then we can... Also, you know, this is gonna be a project that... Right, and that's what we need to get, because I understand... No, that question is, we have that out, the question is to them right now, we're waiting for a written response on that. Because that'll be part of the cost.
And if they don't, the Army Corps is going to come in.
Well, it's like the county in right away. I'm just experiencing that with a sidewalk in Eastport, you know, it's right here, we'll rip everything out and you pay for it all.
To Aaron's point with the, we did have the meeting in Quogue. The village, the village mayor of Quogue, to his credit, wanted to have a meeting before the end of the summer, so we still caught people there. And we had a meeting and supervisor was there and I thought it was, it was very well, it was very well attended and I think it was very informative. People had a lot of questions. We had outreach afterwards. So it was a good first meeting as far as reaching, reaching out to the public, who the people are going to be impacted most.
But the homeowners definitely had very specific concerns, financial concerns. So this is not, a not sophisticated group of homeowners.
No, you're right.
And they have attorneys.
In Quogue, the local share for maintenance is being split across the entire village of Quogue. It's not a, our ECDs are just the oceanfront properties. In Quogue, the entire village is paying the local share. It's a big difference. So the oceanfront properties are paying far less than they will in other areas of the town. And you, you know, in terms of getting easements, I think Tommy, you're correct. It's like certainly something that benefits them. You know, they're giving permission for the federal government to put sand in front of their properties, to protect their properties. But they are, you know, human nature is if it's something that you're, you know, you want and you'd be willing to do it for nothing, but you could get paid to do it, you're probably going to want to get paid to do it.
Yeah. I mean, that's, that's what we, when we started the projects to the west, the community groups all felt that they'd be able to get homeowners to basically sign over the easements without any, any compensation. Then one or two kind of said, wait a second, there's compensation? What are we talking about here? And then they, share them, read to the compensation. But there's always those outliers that are going to say, no, you know what, I, I know I can get more for this property. And they'll go and there's attorneys out there that'll sit there and kind of push the issue to say, you know what, we can take the, we can go to court and fight for more money. But I, what we're hoping is we can access or acquire the land, the easement.
While some of the.
While the, while the additional funds are being argued for in court.
The process under the eminent.
Without having to go to condemnation.
The process under the state eminent domain.
Well, once you go to, before a judge rules, once you go to condemnation, it's yours.
Right.
It's yours, you.
Once you get a vesting order, you have to get a vesting order from the court.
You don't have to wait for the judge to determine the value.
Well, yes, right, that's correct. You could, you could hope that you can get the vesting order before the, and that's what I think Gil was bringing up.
But there's some risk in terms of what the price is going to be. That's why I wanted to make sure that as long as the feds have signed off on the appraised value, even if a judge assigns a higher value, we're going to get reimbursed.
There's a two-step process, there's a two-step process on the eminent domain procedure law. You can make an offer and the owner, homeowner, impacted homeowner has the choice to either, they could accept the payment, the offer that we make to them as full payment, or they can accept it as, check the box for, as an advance payment and they reserve their right to file a claim. At that point, as I feel this kind of making, if we can try to get them to, at least we can get the vesting order at that point. If they don't accept it as full payment, we can try to get the vesting order in place so the project can start, you know. If it, if, if we can't, then that's going to hold up everything. But when I was at the state, the state didn't have to obtain orders, they, they just filed them up and they bested properties. So, you know, projects continued well before any amounts were, were decided on the money. Hopefully, that's, this will be the case, and I think it was the case. I know that in the FEMI projects, there's cases still going on.
Oh, yeah.
Lots of cases still going on.
Yeah, there was condemnations about that.
Yeah, we, we basically followed the initial offers with condemn, you know, eminent domain. And we made everybody aware that this is what we're doing so that we could be in a position where if offers were rejected, we could start the construction and everybody could argue in court whatever amount of time.
You have to be ready for that, I think. If you're not, then the project will be really held up.
Yeah, I mean, that's, and then one of the, one of the things that they kind of beat into our heads under the FEMI project was, you don't want to be like New Jersey, where in New Jersey, there was a case where one homeowner held up the entire project. So that's why we decided, let's try the eminent domain route, you know, to follow the initial, you know, appraisal, so.
And my understanding from speaking with the county attorneys and the folks in DPW who were handling this at the county is that the Judge Leal and the courts were actually pretty cooperative as far as trying to get the vesting orders out quick. Even if, even when we're unsettled on the, on the amounts of the, the termination of the easement, at least we were able to get the vesting orders.
I mean, is that how we're approached? We're not doing it that way, are we? Where we're, we're making an offer and filing eminent domain at the same time?
Well, not exactly the same time. We'll make the offer and then you have to, you have to do, wait for the, for the individual homeowner to make their decision.
Is there a statutory waiting period?
It's 30 days.
30 days.
Yeah, and hopefully we'll get, yeah, hopefully we'll get a number of people who will sign the easement. And then, and then that'll be it for that, for that problem.
Easements, if, and if somebody's willing to give us an easement, do we have to even bother then to obtain an appraisal?
Yes.
We do. We still have to have an appraisal.
Yeah, I forget.
Well, actually, if you, if they're willing to sign a waiver of appraisal and take less than $10,000, no.
But I think, don't we have to have some initial appraisal, not a full appraisal, but just showing that it's less than $10,000 just to support that, I think? And the Army Corps has to approve that before.
It's under a federal reg.
It's procedural stuff, but.
Yeah, it's under a federal reg, so we have to.
There's also different standards in different communities.
And waive appraisal, that's okay.
I mean, the one issue that may be in the town's pocket is that you have previous easements, you know, along the shoreline, which limits the, has already gone through this whole thing. So hopefully, it's, you know, that's a significant value.
Well, some of those are in dispute.
Oh, okay.
Between, you know, that's part of the.
Most of those easements were created as part of the whole, yeah, Tompkins Park.
Are these permanent easements?
These weren't judicially determined, they were.
Perpetual.
Even though the project is 30-year project?
It's actually 50-year authorization, 30-year.
That's a kind of an interesting question, is, does the, does the trustees have the right to charge for their easement as part of this, as a, as a federal funding source? I haven't really thought of the concept, but I'm thinking of it as I'm speaking.
So we're going to get that, that carry cost no matter what?
You're saying the trustees get paid to put the sand onto their easement, is that the question?
Well, because, to follow the, right, the logic, we're getting an easement for these other property owners, but trustees already have an easement, they're giving up that easement, so that should be worth something.
They're not giving up that easement.
No, that they're, they're allowing, they're allowing.
It's a layer on top of a layer, I mean.
Don't give them any ideas. But we have an easement too. The town has a more valuable easement, I believe, than the trustees do. The trustees easement is sort of limited to gathering seaweed and things like that.
Landing boats.
Landing boats, whereas the public, the general public easement, as the judge determined in that dolphin lance, there's a general right to pass a repass.
Which is, which is what is in.
You don't need a purpose of gathering seaweed or landing a boat. You can go across that beach.
So that should limit the value of these homeowner easements, really?
So we should pay us for, the federal government should pay us for putting sand on our easement.
I'd like to talk about that, that's for sure.
See, as far as you get with that.
It's a perpetual work easement that's not totally impacted by the.
Well, I'm not sure, are you planning on getting an easement from the trustees?
Absolutely not.
Absolutely not.
Well, you need to because you're not changing their easement.
They're just the same place.
You're not blocking their, going to collect seaweed.
Well, you, you could be if, if there was a situation where you blocked access to the beach for whatever reason, it technically, I could see where that argument could be made, you know?
Well, I think.
I think it's better you have some understanding out front before you test it.
Well, you know, I, I think the critical component in everything that we're doing here is constant communication with all the stakeholders on a routine and ongoing basis. It's the key to making this project work, whether it's the trustees or the property owner or the village of Quogue. And we just, and, and this is what, you know, Len is talking about, the administration on the town's end of making sure that all this stuff is done, that the DEC and the Army Corps are responding in a timely manner, that, you know, the contractors are executing in a timely manner. That's, that leadership role from the town is the key to getting this project completed.
And we are doing everything we're supposed to be doing, right?
We are, and we're doing more, quite frankly, but we, we need the town board's help in getting Albany and Washington to make their agencies responsive to, to, to our submittals that are required by them for approval.
So we would need to know when the submittals are and when letters and phone calls need to go out.
So we don't see sand until 2024?
Well, that's what we want to argue about, Jim. We want to try to include these costs in our reimbursement, but at the same time, we do need to move forward with our effort now. So I would, I'm going to send an email to the supervisor kind of laying out what you probably need to amend your budget for next year now to allow for some of those costs until we can argue that out. But you want to keep this project moving.
Absolutely.
How long is the actual work?
It's like three, three months.
Oh, that's it?
Yeah.
Would they do that in the off-season?
Yeah, the dredge season is October 1 to March 31 of any year.
Although, again, under FEMI, they did do it during the on-season and it was a rolling project. They did, I don't remember the length, but I want to say 500 feet work on that, then, you know, hopscotch.
There can be extensions into the, those are environmental windows, depending on factors.
Is there specific, is there specific work scheduled for the, for the bowl in Hampton Bays, the area just to the west? I mean, that's particularly problematic.
That's actually, that's this year. That's supposed to be underway.
That's the routine.
When they dredge that inlet, they're going to.
That's for the dredging of the inlet and the sand will get placed.
And then on top of it, this program will put more sand.
Not, not in the bowl. The bowl is, is a separate project called Wozie, west of Shinnecock Inlet. So that is operating independently. It's part of overall FIMP, but it operates at 84,000 feet. So, so, and, and in this particular project.
But that will be done.
Oh, yeah, that's, yeah, that's, that's contract two.
Couple of years ago, they put in, what, 800,000 cubic yards of sand there.
Gill and his men tried to hold back the water.
Yeah, it was a fun night.
That was something.
They're dredging and they already have done significant amount of building up of that under, I guess, Wozie.
Yeah, under Wozie and, and under the emergency, that was under 8499. That's when our federal electeds helped us get that money. And they did that emergency work.
It's like $11 million in sand, but back out.
Commercial dock wouldn't be here if we didn't have that.
Commercial dock, oakland, sunnies.
What about all those recreational docks? About five times the size of the commercial.
And then it would have been the impact on the mainland, you know, impact on Hampton Bays.
Well, some of that had an impact on, on Murches Inlet too, right? All the barriers that were created there, all that science just went right into the bay.
Yeah.
And they're, they're doing projects now, right? I mean, FEMI is, they're all running Murches Inlet as we speak.
Yeah, yeah, Murches and Shinnecock, that's contract two.
And that sand that was placed in the bowl has been sort of working its way down, working its way west.
No, it doesn't. There's a literal block at Pon Quag. Everything from Pon Quag east goes back into the inlet.
It's getting sucked back in.
Yeah, it's a back eddy gyre, gets pulled back.
Gets back into the inlet?
Yeah, because, you know, as the EBTID jet comes out and interrupts with the longshore current, it creates a back eddy current like this.
It's almost like negative pressure, it stops everything.
And that's, that's what's creating the.
Hold your hand out the car window when you're driving, feel the negative pressure, that's what's going on.
The flood type delta, that's, that's what's forming the islands.
And that, that, that EBTID delta is, is where the break is. So at Pon, from Pon Quag, all the sand flows west and east. That's the break. That's what they call a null.
There's an EBTID delta out there.
Oh, giants, about 10 million cubic yards.
Well, you know.
Good sand.
The, the army.
Were you breached?
Uh, no, no, this is right off the inlet.
When we did the study.
Is it caused by the jetties?
Yes, it's caused by the jetties and the EBTID of the water coming out.
Coming out, yeah. When we did the, the state commissioned a study for us, we were looking at the sea water exchange, you know, trying to look at that. And part of that came out because one of the big issues, particularly when we were looking at the nitrogen loading, was exactly that issue. And it's, it keeps growing. I mean, we're seeing it grow. You can watch it grow.
And, and, you know, the sand from contract three doesn't go all the way to Shinnecock Inlet. It only goes to Tiana Beach because east of there, you know, because the Corps for, you've got almost 12, 15 years now, you know, part of the sand they dredge out of Shinnecock Inlet gets bypassed down to Road K. And so that's the sand that works its way westward. So you go to Road K, the beach is not in bad shape, the dunes look pretty good because we've gotten almost a million yards of sand in the last 15 years, just trickling in. But that sand's going to take five decades to get to Quogue because it moves only about 500 feet a year.
All right, so do we have any other questions before we pass our 11:30 mark? Did you present everything, Kelly, that you wanted to?
Yes, yep, that was it. So the next steps will be to schedule a special meeting, most likely, and we'll invite the Army Corps DEC to come and give a presentation similar to the one they did in the Village of Quogue. So the public can come and.
We need to get agreements with the ECDs on the local cost share?
The ECD is you.
Well, the Tiana ECD.
Well, that's you too.
There's no cost to them, I mean, just, what cost are you, you want to share?
We don't have any in the beginning, it's later on.
Right. But we, I think you have to wait for the project participation agreement for the maintenance to come from the state.
That'll be the next contract?
Yeah, that'll be.
Project four?
No, no.
No, no, after this is complete, then we're looking like.
Oh, on contract three, oh, we get another project partnership.
Exactly, another, another people.
We can, we can do this so without.
Yes, that's the beauty of this particular project is it's, it's a, it's a one-shot.
Any other questions?
Oh, yeah, but.
Press the word, tell people it's a great project, sign the easements so we can move forward.
All right, and so we have a good team here moving us forward. Just keep us in the loop so we know what's going on and we know how homeowners are responding.
We're running this all through Jim's office. This project basically is all coordinating through the town attorney's office.
The offers to the property owners are coming through you?
Yeah.
And you're, you're lining up appraisers, probably not yet, you're lining up surveyors?
Surveyors first. We, I know who the appraisers are.
Why do you reach that to the appraisers?
We, you know, I've dealt with the appraisers.
We'll probably be submitting like a packet, we'll be letting an RFP out and then we'll probably submit, once we've identified them, a packet for the board to approve contracts.
Yeah, Kelly and I have spoke with most of the appraisers, I think we're going to be using.
We'll try to keep them grouped together. So you say, oh, yeah, this is that group. This, so you, not one here, random one here.
Quite frankly, the same appraisers I've used when I was at the county, when I was at the state, we use now here at CPF. It's a lot of.
But the surveys are different, right, Jim? I mean, I just went through this with the county, you know, they have a set of surveys, they're supposed to be using our surveys for homeowners' properties, but apparently they have their own set of surveys. I don't know if that's in their head or actually in their hand. But for us, this is an opportunity to clean our system up too, right? And, but those are still the same surveys that have to be unfollowed, the county. And technically, if you did a separate survey, could they argue it if, if the surveys don't match?
Well, the agreement that'll eventually be filed and attached to each of the properties of the county clerks will include the survey that's prepared under this project as well as a description. the loop, so we know what's going on, we know how homeowners are responding.
We're running this all through Jim's office, this project basically is all coordinating through the town attorney's office.
The offers to the property owners are coming through you?
Yeah.
Yep.
And you're, you're lining up appraisers, probably not yet, you're lining up surveyors?
Surveyors first, we, I know who the appraisers are.
Right.
We, you know, I've dealt with the appraisers.
We'll probably be submitting like a packet, we'll be letting an RFP out, and then we'll probably submit, once we've identified them, a packet for the board to approve contracts.
Yeah, Kelly and I have spoke with most of the appraisers, I think we're going to be using.
We'll try to keep them grouped together, so you say, oh yeah, this is that group, this is, so you, not one here, random one here.
Quite frankly, the same appraisers I've used when I was at the county, when I was at the state, we use now here, CPF, it's a lot of.
But the surveys are different, right, Jim? I mean, I just went through this with the county, you know, they have a set of surveys, they're supposed to be using our surveys for homeowners' properties, but apparently they have their own set of surveys, I don't know if that's in their head or actually in their hand, but for us, this is an opportunity to clean our system up too, right? And, but those are still the same surveys that have to be unfilled with the county, and technically if you did a separate survey, could they argue it? If, if the surveys don't match?
Well, the agreement that'll eventually be filed and attached to each of the properties of the county clerks will include the survey that's prepared under this project, as well as a description and essentially the, the guts of the agreement between the core.
Right, and what I'm saying is that it could be somewhat different than the survey that's on file.
You mean a homeowner survey that we have here?
Homeowner survey.
The only difference would be the high water line, and that's ambulatory, so.
Yeah, I, that's what I would have said too, Aaron, but after my experience in life lately in county, I've seen two different surveys prepared.
The hot tubs and the pool.
And they're off.
Bingo.
Really?
That's why they hope.
Yeah, I would, I had the same reaction.
On the survey is going to be, the key thing for us is that it's going to show the proposed easement going across the survey, and then the appraisers are going to have the ability to now look at the proposed easement and the survey on each individual property and how that easement impacts that particular lot.
And they would incur an expense to hire their lawyer to review that property, would they make that claim? I mean, they're stuck.
The combination lawyers generally work on a, on a percentage of what they, you know, overall.
They would definitely have legal expenses, because they're not going to just sign an easement, they're going to have their attorney look at it.
I wouldn't. Do we have to survey the entire property, or?
Yeah.
No, they should just sign an easement.
Well.
We could do a boundary.
We recommend that you sign your.
Guys, there's too much talking, so my, my question was.
Personally, I, personally, I feel, personally, I feel if we're going to go to litigation, if we're going to litigate, or if we're going to have a prop, to do a, I think to do an appraisal the proper way, you need to know the relationship between the proposed easement and that property, everything on it, because I can't go into court and have a, and not have an inaccurate survey.
Right.
That doesn't show the whole thing, you know, I mean, I have to know how, I have to know, I have to see the easement and everything on that property and the relationship of that easement to the rest of the property, that has, that's imperative.
So we do have to show the pools and the tennis courts and the sheds and everything?
I would have to have that.
The amount, the amount of actual cost it's going to, and time it's going to occur to do that is.
Yeah, I mean, once they have to go there and set up all the equipment beyond the property.
So they want a real time survey, and they would not accept the current survey that's read on file?
They definitely wouldn't accept the current survey.
So there's, that's an interesting lie, you know, because theoretically they're supposed to be the same, I know they.
A lot of it becomes, you know, you're looking, your appraisal is going to be based on that moment in time, what's there.
But that's a survey for movement and not so much a survey for placement, you know, to, to the GPS, right? It's different.
Yeah.
The surveyors, they have to get permission to go onto the property.
No, no, you don't need them, under New York state law, we, we didn't need them under FEMA, there's some.
Would our easement cover their movement on the property?
I mean, I'll give notice that we're coming and ask permission.
Right.
But we, we had. Push comes to shove.
Because we own easement on the beach, we can allow surveyors to go survey.
But they got to go the whole property.
But they got to do the whole property, so even.
Oh, they got to go front yard, back yard, okay.
Right, I, I forget the, the actual law, but there is a state law that allows us, because it's a public project.
But you've got access aids and.
Right.
Oh, yeah, no, that's dog, that's going to be an issue for sure, especially in the middle of winter, nobody's.
Surveyors are used to it, I mean, that's kind of what they deal with every day, so.
A little bit different, usually the property owner is asking for the survey, here the town is going to survey their property, and they might have structures that they put there without benefit of a permit.
Well, and, yeah, and that's, in general, in the, again, in FEMA, what was done was they were allowed to correct it after the work was done, so.
We're not really there for.
We're not there to police their property, but eventually they're going to want to come back and get some kind of building permit for something else, and at that point, they're going to have to have everything aligned, so.
I mean, if somebody, it's an interesting situation, if somebody has built a walkway that they didn't have permission from the town, from Marty Shay, et cetera, you know, and now they're being paid money to reconstruct it, a structure that's not a legal structure.
Oh, absolutely, that, I mean, I ran into that when I was at the state, when we were building the Kaseyaski Bridge, and there were billboards, and, and some, and a very important part of it was whether those billboards were, were legal or not, some were, weren't not legal, they were not in performance with the federal highway law, and they didn't have permits from the city, those I didn't have to compensate for, because they weren't supposed to be there, others, the legal ones were worth a fortune, the ones that weren't legal.
But somebody might have a very nice ocean view deck on the dune crest that doesn't have any permits.
That's right, that's, that's all part of it.
Fire roll on pines.
It's all part of it, it's, it's a very intricate, you know, when you're, when you're, when you're trying to examine the damages of it, of it, there's a lot that comes into the blood.
All right, so there's obviously a lot of unknowns that will.
Yeah, and, and, you know, the fortunate thing that, you know, the knowledge of land use and, and what you can and cannot put on a piece of, all that comes very much into play and now.
All right, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Onward. Get the sand.
Have a good day.
A policy of sand.
Still hurricane season, we're hanging in there, not, not too bad.
Oh, you said it now.
Well, it wasn't at the anniversary of she was from Sandy, was it?
It was at the end of October.
That was the end of October?
Well, coming up right here.
Right, and we had the October storm.
Seems like things have shifted like a week, few weeks towards the end of the year.
Okay, so we're gonna, um. I think the next thing is the review of the draft agenda, so, yes.
Thank you.
Sunday is waiting for, so this is going to be, there are, there are some additional ones, right, add-ons, and here it is, this is for the meeting on October 25th, it is scheduled as an evening meeting here at Town Hall and via Zoom, and, let's see, there are four public hearings, one is on the 23 preliminary budget, one is considering increases in proposed, increases proposed in the maximum amount to be expanded annually in the town of Southampton special districts, public hearing is the third one for the proposed recipients of the 2023 community development block grants, and then the fourth is a hearing, a secret draft environmental impact statement, this is on Liberty Gardens, formerly known as Concern for Independent Living, this is a jump, a zone change from R20 to multifamily, 12 units an acre to construct 60 units, this is the one behind the church in Southampton, I think it's like roughly five acres back there, across from Burger King, if you're familiar with the Burger King on County Route 39, across the street, there's a church there, and behind the church, there's additional property, so the hearing, that'll be a hearing on the draft environmental. All right, and then we get to resolutions, so you guys, I guess we'll just read them.
Town Board Resolution 41491 to authorize FM global grant application for the purchase of equipment for division of fire prevention.
41507, this authorizes me to sign contract extension for property cleanup to bring properties back into compliance, this is with, with Rockmore Contract Incorporated, and I don't show which properties, I guess it's various properties. It's an extension. All right, the next one, 41518, authorizes supervisor to execute letter of intent and the issuance of a purchase order with Horizon as it relates to the Southampton Volcano ambulance building project. Well, next one, 41524, authorizes supervisor to sign contract extension for banners and signs, Fisher Signs.
41522, authorize supervisor to sign contract extension for repair and install sidewalks with Long Island Mason and Concrete.
4152, oh, that's you, sorry.
41523, co-sponsored with Councilman McMarra, authorize supervisor to sign contract extensions for street sweeper parts and gutter and rear brooms with Malbezi Equipment and Trias Incorporated.
41478, authorizes the purchase of gasoline, run the New York State OGS contract with Sprague Operating Resources.
41505, authorizes supervisor to sign contract extension with the Great Northern Fibers LLC for private or municipal markets for the disposal and recycling services for mixed paper and corrugated cardboard.
41530, which John probably wants to co-sponsor.
Yes, I would like to.
To execute a 22 cultural arts and recreation grant for West Hampton Beach Performing Arts Center, can we add John on that?
I did, yes.
That's a thousand dollars for their, one of their programs. 41510, authorize supervisor to execute a 2023 contract extension with the Rocky Smith, preparation of an annual financial order for year ending December 31st of '22.
Resolution 41513, authorize supervisor to execute an agreement with Long Island Telecommunications and Electronic Services Inc. for portable radios to Hampton Bays Water District.
ID 41511, authorize supervisor to sign a sole source contract with General Code LLC for services for the town clerk's office. Town Board Resolution 41472, co-sponsored with Councilman Skivoni, is to authorize supervisor to sign a contract with radio stations in order to inform the public about Proposition 3 on the November election ballot, the iconic Bay Region Community Housing Fund. Town Board Resolution ID 41488, award and authorize supervisor to sign a contract for closed top shelf contained ejector trailer with hydraulic roof opening for Specter Manufacturing Incorporated, that's for waste management.
Let's see, 41529, authorizes me to sign a contract for professional surveying and engineering services for Neuyac Road pedestrian enhancements with the Grendman Peterson, this is actually Tommy John's proposal for that sidewalk work over there. 41525, awards and authorize supervisor to sign contract with Fisher Signs for vehicle graphics.
41514, recall and amend Resolution 2, 2022-35, authorize supervisor to extend any and all documents relating to an agreement with Telview Corporation to purchase and install broadcast equipment and software for Southampton Channel 20.
Resolution ID 41527, recall and amend Town Board Resolution 2022-221, purchase of food products and related supplies from Omnia Partners with Premier Inc. with distribution through USP.
41512, is the 2022 notice to bidders for disposal and recycling services for unprocessed construction and demolition debris.
Supervisor would like to be co-sponsored on that.
Resolution, oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Dennis.
Follow page 18 and the top of page 19, bidders interested to be in versus their contract, that paragraph needs to be deleted. The Department of Labor, I'm told that the Department of Labor has reversed the decision that prevailing wages are required.
Yes. Really?
What? Okay.
That's coming from the contracts division.
Well, it's, it's good news in the sense it probably will save us some money, it's probably, organized labor probably not very happy about that.
I do.
Okay, so we're gonna, we're striking the bidders interested in this project are required.
Need to know more about that.
And we don't have our own position on, on that issue? I guess not, so, I mean, some towns may have their own requirement.
Well, this is just for the opening to, to bid, right?
It's a notice to bidders, it's an RFP for disposal and recycling services.
The choice ultimately.
And unprocessed construction, and this is C and D.
Yep.
So this is which, I, I thought we, they take that stuff to Brookhaven.
Yeah, Brookhaven and beyond, depends on what is being, what they're doing with it.
This is for disposal services.
And recycling.
All right, let's continue, so we're just, we're striking that paragraph, yes?
Yes, I have the information.
And I'd like to be added as co-sponsor.
And we're adding John in to the RFP for C and D, all right, John, you got the next resolution?
Town Board Resolution ID 415450, a 2022 notice to bidders for farming at Sayerfield, 93 Butter Lane Bridge, Hampton, this is a rebid.
That's land that we own, that we let people farm. All right, 41490, amends the 22 budget for various departments, it's just housekeeping. 41463, accepts resignation of John Leonard from the Architectural Review Board, we discussed that, so.
41465, authorization of cost reimbursement waiver for the Hampton Bays Union Free School District Homecoming Parade on October 14th, 2022, from 4:00 to 6:30 PM.
Now, 41445, authorize supervisor to submit to the Clean Energy Communities Grant Application for the purchase of an electric vehicle. 41446, authorize supervisor to submit to the Clean Energy Communities Grant Application for the purchase of several electric charging stations and an electric vehicle.
Town Board Resolution 41449, authorized waiver of Parks and Recreation Facility's use fee for the Hampton Bays High School Interact Club, run as 1, 5K on November 5th, 2025.
41515, Hampton Bays Water District, accept donation from the Hampton Bays Fire Department for two vehicles. 41492, 2022 Standard Workday and Reporting Resolution for elected appointed officials. I know, I know it says my standard workday is eight hours, I wish that were true, particularly on a day with a listening session at Hampton Bays, but, you know, it's like, it's, how many hours are there in a day, 24?
Sometimes.
I think you stand at work days, you had the 22.57.
Yeah, that's, yeah, I work on weekends, I work days, but that's okay, so 410.
Well, it's not just like you're the only one.
No, I know, I'm on call 24/7. 41099, appoints Valerie Bellevue to Justice Court Clerk position in Justice Court. 41416, attendance at 2022 IA Pro Training Symposium. 41517, we just need to amend, we're not amending it, we're changing it, so it's, do you have a, is that on the add-on packet?
Yeah.
It's, so just skip over that, it's got a different number, it's going to be 41528, is that, no?
No.
No?
Can we put it down?
Oh, I see, 41517, I got it, it's in the add-on packet. But it's a notice.
I have the changes.
It's still the same, it's a notice for public hearing for 23 fire protection contracts.
Do you want me to amend it as, as in the?
We don't need to amend it, we have just, just the one that's in the walk-on packet.
I have the changes, thank you.
Or the add-on packet is the one that will actually be the resolution.
Which one is that? I'm not.
But the dollars are.
I'm a little confused.
I don't see it in the walk-on packet.
Yeah, so the add-on packet, it's, it's way at the end.
Oh, oh, the, oh, it's attached, okay.
Some of it's really just spaces.
It's way in, way in the back, we have a copy here if you want to see, that's the,
I don't think it's finished up.
Not the one that's in the thick packet, but this one will be instead of it, and then, John, you're up next.
Got to get these fire protection contracts.
We'll make the amendments.
Okay. Phase 32.
Town Board Resolution ID 41447, notice of public hearing to consider historic landmark designation of the property located at 29 Eddox Road, Remsenburg, Spanish, public county tax map is indicated in the resolution, the Wheat Tenna Duck Farm Residence. Town Board Resolution 41520, this is a road review application for Irene Hocktaz, a public county tax map is indicated in the resolution, situated at North Sea is accepted. Did I miss one?
Nope.
41528, notice of hearing to amend Article 6 parking time limited to designated locations to strike an inconsistent regulation, Chapter 312-3218, which allows for parking on the east and west side of New Place Road between its intersections with Fanning Avenue and Argon Road, which is a not, a no stopping zone.
Sunday, if I could co-sponsor that one, please?
Certainly.
That's out by Rumba, right?
Yes.
We, something happened there, we changed the signs, or?
There was a, there's, yes, there was, it's a no stopping zone, but the section in here where it says there's a parking vehicle restriction was never. there's a parking vehicle restriction was never taken out of the code.
Okay.
So it's conflicting with the no-stopping.
Yeah, and there's been an ongoing issue here for years.
The signs got changed and.
Right.
So this clears it up.
Four one five three two, Resolution Adopting Housing Plan as an amendment to the Southampton Town Comprehensive Plan. So we'll have a hearing on that plan.
I'd like to be co-sponsor on that as well.
Okay. Cindy, could you add, I mean, Tommy John's already on, John on?
You should all do that one, I think.
On the housing plan?
Yeah.
All right, everybody want to be on?
Sure.
All right.
Okay, got it.
All right, and Cindy, you have the last one here.
Four one five three four, authorized change in scope for 2021 Mill Pond Aquatic Habitat Restoration Water Call.
So that's basically to allow for the Lily Pad Harvest Act.
It's a change in the original grant.
Same amount of money, right? It's just that we're shifting money from islands, floating islands, to carp and to Lily Pad Harvest Act. All right, any questions on the agenda?
Sunday, can you add me to five three four also, please?
Five three.
The last one.
Yeah, actually, could you add me to that as well?
You guys are all into that Lily Pad thing.
Not really. It's just a, it's just a.
All right, so back, so yeah, Cindy, you're good to go, when you obviously know that.
There's just like that like trail of smoke behind her.
All right.
She's got work to do.
Okay. Updates? All right, I guess we'll start with the listening sessions, which have been going, I think, pretty well in Hampton Bay's, I've done two of them so far. The first one was four to six, the second one was six to eight. None of them have ended when they were supposed to, they've gone an hour or two beyond to get through all the people who have been coming. A lot of people have been speaking, and some people have spoken several times. We're getting a lot of new people though as well. And so today, four to six, I'm hoping to not have to stay too much after six, so we'll see what the crowd looks like. And we'll do one more next Thursday. Then, at that point, you know, my hope for these, my hope was that we would sort of be able to sit around the table and talk, have conversations as well. So I think moving into November, I'd like to sort of switch things over to more like a planning session where people can sign up maybe ten to a time slot, four PM, five PM, six PM, where we can actually sit around the table and walk around downtown or whatever it might be, and have more of an exchange of ideas. Also, I've been working on a public information survey, a written survey that hopefully every resident of Hampton Bay's will get and fill out in terms of, you know, what their thoughts are about downtown revitalization and what their hopes are and what their concerns are. And we can start to develop this community consensus. And I, I know Rick attended one of the listening sessions, and Janice attended one of the listening sessions, and Cindy, I think you're coming.
This evening.
This evening, today to attend. And I, one of the things I'm gonna ask the group to do, if there's time, is to take a look at the draft of the survey and let me know their thoughts, if it's, is anything I'm missing, that would be helpful information. And, you know, we can, we continue on. So there are some things that I'm sensing are part of a community consensus. You know, I think we're all sort of feeling that there were, you know, some of the heights of the buildings. A lot of people seem to be suggesting that they don't want to see three and a half stories or four-story buildings, some don't even want three-story buildings. But certainly that, that extra habitable space above the third floor is certainly something that they're not desirous of. And I mentioned this last time, the sewage treatment plant location that was suggested by the cemetery, there's a great deal of public rejection of that as an appropriate site. And, you know, I've been asked by numerous people about the appeal, who feel that we should not be continuing the appeal if we're starting fresh, because then the concern is if we won the appeal, we would have the old zoning, which does allow for that fourth story, and some of the other things in there that the public is saying that they don't want. So that's something that the board, we need to talk about. As we do these written surveys, we'll have a broader consensus, I think, about certain things, and then we'll have to go about developing a plan that is in line with that community consensus. So if there's no other, no questions about that, I'll move on to a different topic. Does anybody?
Yeah.
I just want to thank you for doing this in the first place. You know, probably by tonight, we'll have 160, 170 different people who've come in and voiced their opinion, and you're correct, there's a lot of commonality in what they say. And it might be time to get rid of those points and move on to what they would actually see. I hear a lot of requests for like a mixed use, some professionals, some housing, some retail. You know, some people are a little afraid of too much retail or too much housing at one time. So I think we need to get into more of that nitty-gritty on what people are expecting it maybe to look like, how it will flow, and what the traffic's gonna do to impact downtown.
Absolutely, somebody else wanted to say?
Question, yeah, I had one, I was, I had some time tonight and was going to go. Jim, is that a violation of open meetings law if I stop in and listen? I really want to hear the community.
Yeah, you can be, if you're not participating.
Do you want to go, is it easier, you want to go this week and I'll go next week?
It's okay, if you want to go.
I think you can both go.
Yeah, we're just not making decisions and discussing policy.
If you're not actively participating, you're not running it, you're sitting in a corner listening to like any other resident, that's fine.
I wouldn't put all three of us at the same table. I would say, Cindy, if you want to sit at the table with me, because you've already previously requested that, I think that's fine, and Tommy John, I think you could sit in the audience, would be okay, if you want to trade places.
Sure, so long as you tell the public what we're doing.
Yeah.
He's sleeping here, he doesn't want to participate.
You're here to listen, you're here to listen, we're not making decisions, we're just listening, so.
Right, right.
Okay.
I think it's fine.
I think it'll be fine.
It's a public meeting. If you guys want to trade.
Totally open to, you can go this weekend, and I'll go next week.
It's really not a problem.
That's fine with me.
If you're not participating in the meeting itself, you're not running the meeting.
Thank you.
Just to keep the.
You can cover the first hour, and he can cover the second.
But just not to have any, you know, overlap, I'm totally fine, Tommy John, if you want to go tonight, I'll go next week.
You guys figure it out.
Sounds like it's okay.
It's really okay if you want to go there, it's, you're a resident.
You can both sit in the audience.
I do live here.
You know, that's fine too, you can both, you don't have to sit up there with me if you want to, or trade places, or whatever it is. These are listening sessions, I'm really not answering questions. Unless somebody asks me a specific question, I will try to answer. Okay, so, so let's see. I mentioned this earlier when we had this special meeting, but this pilot program of blinking lights is next week. We have been gathering data. We did, in an effort to gather accurate data, we did not blink the Canoe Place Road Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday this week, so we'd have baseline data. Originally, you know, we would have probably not blinked it the whole week this week, but because so many people were complaining on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, particularly Tuesday and Wednesday, it was Monday was a rainy day, it wasn't so bad. So we did get the, at least three days of data. And of course, we'll have other data across the town. So how are we gathering data? We have a company that has counters in a number of locations on backroads and mainroads. I think we have like nineteen counters, locations, or something like that. Because one of the things we're assessing, not only is the changes in commute time, but also the impact to backroads, neighborhood roads. And we've had people in the traffic, so that we, we have a number of volunteers who are logging the amount of time it takes to get from point A to B all this week, and then next week, and the week after. So we'll have that data. We also are using Google Maps, if you plug in where you, starting point and where you're going at any particular time during the day. So if you plug it in at seven o'clock, it'll tell you what the travel time is, at least, might not be that accurate, but it's usually pretty accurate. So Tom Neely has been gathering that data and plugging it into a table. And then next week, and I do want to mention this, the partnership here, but next week, Monday to Friday, we will be blinking the light at Canoe Place Road in the morning, it's from 5:30 to 9:30 in the morning. We will be blinking the light on Montauk Highway at St. Andrews, on County Road 39 at the college, which is Tuckahoe and McGee. And we will, and Strublin? What's, is Strublin one too, that we're getting, we're blinking?
I don't think so, because that light pretty much stays green.
Six of them, so it's Canoe Place, St. Andrews, Tuckahoe, McGee.
The other side of Tuckahoe.
The notice of adoption I attached to you.
There's one more, oh, maybe, oh, I know where it is, I know where it is, it's Tuckahoe on Montauk Highway. All right, so let me start again with the intersection. So you have Canoe Place Road on blink, and you can go straight through, but you won't be able to make those, the left-hand turns. The next light on Montauk Highway is, is Tuckahoe, that will be on blink. And the next light after that is St. Andrews, and that will be on blink. So those three in a row on the Montauk Highway run. On County Road 39, the first light you get to is at the college, that's Tuckahoe, that will be on blink. And then the next light you get to is McGee, and that will be on blink. North Main will not be, David White's will not be, that will be normal operation of those lights. When you get to Watermill though, which I guess Station Road, that will be on blink. So those are the six intersections. Now, in terms of partnership, besides obviously the county's cooperation and the state's cooperation, Highway has been working on this, so has the police department, so Captain Kirin in and Charlie Ricardo, Highway Superintendent, Tom Houghton has been very involved, our town engineer, Tom Neely, Ryan Murphy, our Public Safety Director, has been very involved. Councilman Skivoni has been attending the meetings. Let me think of who else, Sean Cambridge has been involved, and, you know, there's, Jesse Warren there, Warren has been, come to a bunch of the meetings, because the village is helping with Montauk Highway and St. Andrews. Who am I leaving out? Rick, have you been to some of those, this highway liaison? So there's a lot of work that has been going into this, and I'm hoping it's gonna be successful. It's not gonna be perfect, it's October. People will say, why October? But because of all the moving parts here, it's, you know, we sort of have to test it. We don't want to test it in December when traffic is much lighter. October traffic, there's still a lot of traffic.
Oh, absolutely.
Still plenty of traffic, so. And Dorothy's been helpful too, I mean, we've had to deal with the financial aspects of this and the funding of it. So, but does anybody have any questions about the blinking light program that we're gonna test?
No, but a comment, one of the things that we're looking to see is, in addition to what happens to traffic on the backroads, but what would happen to the traffic flow in general? Do more people take Noack Road or Montauk Highway? We're hoping that people stay on the main arteries, and the only way to know is to measure it, so we're doing that.
Also, the county has rescheduled their paving for East Montauk Highway to Monday overnight, so I'm hoping they get out of there well in advance of setup for the cones and the light.
Right, yeah, so that section may not have lines on it. I mean, it may be torn up a little bit, but it'll be passable, I believe, so they're paving it at night.
Yep.
Right now, they're working during the day on the sidewalks.
Which is push some people back onto 27 and back on the fanning.
The work they're doing is really nice. You know, and they're, and the community group are really happy after it's repaved. It's not just that section, they're repaving, I believe, the entire unpaved area.
Yeah, from King Collin to over the railroad bridge to CPI.
That's horrible.
Yeah, yeah, the community's been calling for that for a long time, for repaving that, so. It's finally happening, thank you county. And. You know, I should mention Bridget Fleming as our county legislator, who's been involved with that project as well. And then the last thing I'll mention is the first public hearing on the 2023 preliminary budget is scheduled for Tuesday, 10:26, sorry, 10:25 at 6:00 PM. Again, it'll be a hybrid meeting, so you can access it via Zoom. And the preliminary budget, as well as what we just talked about, the blinking light movement restrictions, all that is on the town's website, so if people want more information about those things, even the listening sessions, the link is information about the listening sessions as well. So that's all I have for updates, Councilman Skivoni?
Nothing at this time?
Just really quickly, I'm happy to announce that the sidewalk project in Eastport just got started yesterday. Yay! We had a few hiccups, but I did want to especially thank Ms. Silver Venus and Mike and Bridget Fleming's office, they did a lot of work. We had to negotiate a lot with the DPW, and they were very responsive, and it went very well. And also Fred Steele for providing Sidewalk to Schools money for that project. Thank you all for all of the involvement, where we started. For the people that live in that area, it will be about a week, so hopefully it's gonna be, you know, a pretty quick thing, there shouldn't be too much interruption in traffic flow, so, but thank you all.
I actually have a couple more things, but I'll come back to me.
I'm good.
I just want to reiterate what we said the other day, the youth bureau did a Stuff the Bus event at Stop &amp; Shop. Stop &amp; Shop was a wonderful partner, they actually sent out memos to other vendors and other supermarkets to send over food. The response was tremendous, there was, you know, hand trucks full of food coming, the kids all loaded on the bus. They brought it back Monday, they were able to supply the food pantry at Blaze Church, their own pantry, and all the little pantries we have in the town. So they're in good shape, yeah, great, great event.
Anything else? Two things I'll mention, so the highway department, you may have seen emails or calls on this, they're doing, they're addressing the chronic flooding at the end of Flying Point Road out by the cut. There's an area there that always, almost always, has got a very large puddle, and it makes it very difficult for cars that park along there, it makes it difficult for women, you know, or men pushing baby carriages, bicyclists, even people walking down to that cut, they can't, the flooding's been terrible. So Highway Superintendent Ricardo has, working with, I think, Rosemar and McLean, they have come up with a way to elevate that portion of the road. I just want to clarify some misinformation, they are not making the road any wider than it already is or was. They're not adding any additional parking than what was historically there. The problem through the years was that the sand was able to accumulate on the sides of the road and made it appear like it was narrower at the end of the road. This is just at the end of the road, it's not the whole of Flying Point, it's the last section of Flying Point. And then, so the sand kind of constricted the road, and then, you know, brush and things like that grew up, and they've just restored it to the historic wits, that's all, so no additional new parking. And I went down there yesterday, it's looking great, I think it's gonna be a great project. And I think, you know, I, the fact that we may get some parking spaces back that we lost, but we're not adding more than we historically had, I just wanted to make that very clear. And hopefully that flooding will be gone. Also, I just learned too, I know that some people are interested in the issue of East Hampton Airport and how, you know, changes there could affect us, some positive and some negative. But I guess it's Judge Basely just ruled on it, so there is a decision that is restricting the town from closing or limiting flights. So the town cannot close or limit airport flights. There's an article in 27 East about it, so. There's an article in 27 East about it. All right, and that's it. All right, so next, we would, that's the last item other than executive session items. So executive session, we have personnel, litigation, acquisition and probably, yeah, so confidential legal, that's litigation, personnel and CPF acquisitions. So if there's no other business, I'll make a motion to close our work session and go into executive session on those items. Second, my Councilman Bouvier, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we are-